I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll so move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We have our opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this morning? Could you just state your name and address?
Yeah, good morning. Jesse Fonkert, 610 Part T Drive, Hartford, South Dakota, Minnehaha County, unfortunately here. I serve as the Executive Director of the Lincoln County Economic Development Association and the Minnehaha County Economic Development Development Association, commonly referred to as Lakeeta and Maketa. And coming here today is to provide an update to you. Commissioner Aaron serves on our board as your designee, and we've had a great time working together the last year. I've been in this position now since April of 2020, and our organizations are prime for future economic development. We are working towards a consolidation right now of our two organizations, which we'll be announcing officially at our annual meeting on February 25th at the Country Club of Sioux Falls. Hope you can all attend. You should have received an invitation in the mail. And part of the reason for our consolidation is to help cut down our expenses. Right now, we have two different separate boards, two different bank accounts, books, insurance policies, and by consolidating, then we can save a few thousand dollars a year. But also from a branding standpoint, a lot of folks, when they hear Lincoln County Economic Development, they think that we can speak on behalf of the county or that we are the county, when in fact, we're not the county. We are just supported by the county in your economic development efforts. 2020 has been a wild year. Sales tax dollars were up in pretty much every single community that we serve across Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. And financially speaking, I think many of those towns are better off. Going forward in '21, we see a lot of interest and prospects in the value-added ag sector and also in the warehousing and distribution sector. And we think that many of our towns are prime candidates for some of those facilities. So I don't know if I have a timeline on public comment, but I'll keep my comments short. I really hope that if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Our consolidation is exciting. We'll also be launching a new website, which will be our first website, long overdue, I think, and the future is bright. Any questions?
Jesse, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for your service to Alkeeta and Mkeeta. Been working with you for almost two years now and really appreciate what you've been doing and all the hard work and effort you've put into it. And just so people know, it was a unanimous decision by both boards to consolidate, and they'll still retain their focus on, and will still have a number of, all Lincoln County members on one part of the board and Minnehaha County members on the other part of the board. So it won't lose any focus on Lincoln County economic development whatsoever.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse, for the report this morning.
Thank you.
I'd like to also echo what Commissioner Aaron's had to say because I get to see Jesse come to work every day.
I do go to work. That confirms that I'm in the office sometimes.
And I know that he has a lot of great ideas pending for what lies ahead of us in our growth situation here. And I congratulate him because I think he brought with him a pretty stellar record from the city of Hartford, where he was Development Director. So welcome aboard. And again, I'll echo what Commissioner Aaron said. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a comment this morning? Quiet. All right. Move on to Commissioner Report.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of items that, we had a phone conference yesterday with the South Dakota Association of Counties, and we reviewed all of the pending legislation that may be affecting counties. And I just picked up two that were just dropped yesterday. There's House Bill 1230, which is kind of interesting, which would call for the establishment of a county capital improvement fund, purpose to deposit amount, increase in deposit for promulgated rules, but it's designed for building and renovating buildings. And it calls for a sales tax that is revenue generated under two chapters, 1045 and 1046, which calls for the Department of Revenue to deposit a certain amount of that tax collected into a fund designed for counties that would be managed, and it would be under the Board of Economic Development, and counties could apply for that funds to do their remodeling or their building. Now, that's been just introduced yesterday. That was kind of interesting. I don't know where that's going to go. If it does, like a lot of things, it ends up on the 41st date. The other one is HB 1237, which establishes a special funding for townships and counties to declare for their bridges. And it calls for the state to put up more money for a match from the federal government to address bridges primarily. That's HB 1237. So if any of you are fanatic, wanted to look up the website, and you want to know who's those committees, send them an email. Tell them that it's a good deal. So, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Any other commissioners have informational report they'd like to make? All right, then we're going to move on into the regular agenda, and we do need an executive session this morning, as I understand things, under SDCL 125, 2, sub 3, and sub 4. I'd consider a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Consider a motion to come out of executive session?
So move. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Go on to regular business. Item one. Who's going to tee that up? Julia?
Madam Chair, I will.
Go ahead.
Last week, I asked, talked to you about the addition support for our HR person and for our veteran service officer. And I asked them to send to the commission their rationale for additional staff, which they need, and they did. So I would welcome any conversation because before I make a motion that we do hire an individual to assist these two critical areas for county service.
That's your motion?
Yes, if that's my motion, that's my motion.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to that issue or second the motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then I'm going to move on. I'm going to move to item five. The reason I'm skipping around is I have to leave at 10:15, so I want to get through some of these other items. Commissioner Gibbon, you were going to speak to item five?
Yes. Madam Chair, I would like to table this until our next meeting, and if I could have a second, I'll explain why.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know at one time, we were talking that it was very difficult to find people to serve on planning and zoning. And I know that I've been very pleasantly surprised. As you can see, we have three parties that are interested in serving. I would like some additional time to meet individually with these three. I don't care if it's over a cup of coffee or if it's a telephone conversation to see what their views are on planning and zoning and what this county has ahead of it. And I think that I've also had inquiries from people that have said that they might also would like to be, I guess, considered as well, even though they haven't made a formal application. So if I could have additional time, I would like to meet with them. And then if I am supposed to give a recommendation to this commission, I'd be more than willing to do so at our next meeting after I've had some opportunity to visit with them. And I know I have a couple of them in house today, and maybe they would like to speak.
Commissioner Gibbon, just, would you be opposed to just advertising those? So anybody that would be interested, we could have them apply, and then you and one of the other commissioners would talk to them. And that's typically what we would do. And so I'm wondering if we really need a motion to table or if we could move forward and advertise so that anybody in the county that is interested would be put on notice that they could apply.
Could we table with the suggestion that we add the, I know, I'm not speaking, Jim, yet. It's your call.
Yeah, yeah. I guess originally, I know Commissioner Landine, you had brought that point up last week, and I think it was a good point. I've been told by different people that have called me this past week that this is something that has been done in the past, even though it is apparently my decision who I present to the commission. So I would not be opposed.
So do you want to table or do you want to move forward with advertising? I know we have a motion, but you'd need to amend it if we were going to just advertise and give everybody a fair shot.
Well, obviously, I'd like to give people a fair opportunity, correct?
Could we amend with the suggestion that we're going to advertise?
You could amend to advertise, or if you want to table it to discuss or think about, we can do that too. But I think we just need to make a decision so we get the spot filled.
What are you going to do, Jim? Do you want to, well, I'm saying, I mean, we'll table it right now, but with the table with the understanding that we're going to advertise for other people to apply.
Your motion is to table.
We got to, we got to move to the table and a second.
Any other discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Is this resolution to table in order to advertise or just to table?
I would say to table to advertise. I don't know, Jim. Is that what you're understanding?
I'll make that change on my second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we have a new hire in the sheriff's office. Julia here? Oh, there you are. Didn't see you over there.
In the corner. Good morning.
Good morning.
One new hire for the sheriff's office today, and that is Andrew Steinberg. He'll be a full-time deputy sheriff for the sheriff's office at 2488 per hour, effective as of yesterday, which is the 8th of February.
Is that filling a position that was already open? Or is it a new one or is it filling somebody that needed to be replaced?
It's a backfill. So we'll have, you'll see in two weeks, we'll have another hire, Sebastian Acosta. He'll be starting today as a deputy sheriff, so that makes three that we've hired, and then we still need three more, which are the new positions for 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Progress.
Second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Sean?
Commissioner-
If there's no other discussion, sorry, guys. Okay. Sean, go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. You have item seven, Julia, as well.
Yeah, you want to keep going?
Yep.
Okay, so it's my understanding that the commission wanted to review two positions within the facilities department. So the building superintendent position and then also the lead maintenance worker position for exemption status. In short, per Fair Labor Standards Act, the lead maintenance worker position does not qualify for exemption status. I provided some additional information regarding the building superintendent position. And this is where it gets a little bit convoluted. However, in short, if the intent is for this position to oversee the department and all of the manual labor, then it would be, it would qualify for exemption status. However, in the regs, there's a caveat that anyone that is doing manual labor on a consistent basis does not qualify for the exemption status. So if the commission, there's two different options. If you want this position to oversee the department and the manual labor, labor, excuse me, then that would, again, qualify for exemption status. However, if you want this individual to actually do the manual work, then it would just be an hourly position. So I think that's the first thing that the commission needs to decide on, and then I have some implementation options for you as well, depending on what you decide.
So Julia?
Yeah.
I'm not, so if you want to be the boss, you really can't do any manual labor?
Very minimal. The caveat is for manual labor, and it's called blue collar workers. And so in the caveat, it says about maintenance-related work. However, if the person's overseeing staff, then it's exempt level.
There's no asterisk at the bottom that says, this rule can be interpreted many different ways. We can find a way around it.
Well, it is government, so there's lots of asterisks, but.
So is this a specific, what specific position are we talking about?
The building superintendent position.
So in other words, if that building superintendent oversees all the departments, which, yeah, I'm confused. I could see that happening. It could be the boss. They're the ones responsible for all the needed maintenance within the building. So, but at the same time, if, you know, and if somebody is sick or somebody's short or they need some special help, I'd expect them to pick up the slack.
Absolutely, and that's a fair point. So it's, in the regs, it's different for an individual in, let's say, this position specifically. It's different if they were to say, shoot, I'm in a pinch. I got to do some snow this afternoon. The difference is consistently and routinely providing those duties. So if there's a pinch for this position that's saying someone got sick or what have you, and they have to do it, okay, fine. That's just fine. That happens. But to consistently and routinely do it, then it wouldn't qualify. The position right now is classified to oversee all of the facilities and the snow removal, lawn maintenance, and lawn care.
And that's the building superintendent position?
Correct. Yep.
But then would the lead maintenance worker also be supervising?
No. It currently oversees one person, but the regs say they have to oversee at least two. And that position routinely does, I mean, the large majority of their work is the lawn maintenance, lawn care, and what have you.
So currently, our superintendent is hourly?
Correct.
Would that go to salary then?
That's what we're trying, that's what's on the plate.
Yeah, that's what you, that's what we're looking at.
But if it goes to salary, there would be many functions that he currently does that he could no longer do for us.
Correct, unless in a pinch.
And then if he goes salary, we'd have to hire somebody to do those things he can no longer do, presumptively.
Well, right now, we have people in place to do those things. And if there's more help that's needed, and this is where I would rely on the building superintendent, if more help is needed for the snow removal and lawn maintenance work, then we can go that route. But that is a staffing issue.
But not to talk in cliches, John, just take the wrapper off. Okay, John, so if you become, you become the superintendent overall, and you can't get up and blow the snow or cut the grass, John is available to come and do that kind of work, right? So what's the problem?
I'm going to, can you just, what are we paying on overtime right now for the building superintendent position? Or what did we pay last year, if you have that information?
Yes, I do. And that was attached in the filing file.
Okay.
So this position, I did a quick analysis for the last three years of overtime, 2018, 19, 20, and here is the average over those last three years. And then in 2022, staff were added here, one being the lead maintenance tech worker was added in December, and then the other one was a new hire, a new created position in July.
If I could just point out something, just because there is, with that data, there is, in my mind, I know it's overtime, but '19, I had 31 hours of comp time. That's not included in that number, so that'd be like another, oh. Yeah, so my wage at that time, that would have been another $1,100, or about $1,200. So that's not included in the overtime, but I took it as comp time because at that point, I didn't have much vacation because we didn't earn much that first year, if you remember. So I just saying that that number is a little skewed, and I know it's not listed as overtime, but in my opinion, it's equivalent because I would have gotten paid overtime if I wouldn't have comped it. So.
My initial thought is that supervisory employees should be salaried, but what's the thoughts of the rest of the board?
Commissioner Schmidt or any other commissioner, should we, I'm going to make a motion to table this. And with the intent that we sit down this week, early next week, we don't have commission next Tuesday, and we try to sort this out in the meantime. Sounds like there's some unanswered questions. It sounds like there's some good information, though, that Julia provided. I'm willing to sit down with whatever other commissioner wants to, and we could sort this out because this may go towards a larger issue as well, not just this position, but maybe other activities or positions that are going on, and maybe we need to realign those as well. So that would be my motion to table, and then in the interim here, we'll sit down and talk about it and see if we can't present a couple courses of action or a solution to the commission at the next meeting.
Madam Chair, I'll second that, and I would like to join Commissioner Aaron's on that review.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And just a point of clarification, in the memo that I provided, at the very end, it talked about two other potential positions that could qualify based on my research of these other two positions. Do you want me to keep researching that to provide that information to you in those upcoming discussions, or how do you want me to proceed?
I think that would be a great idea, actually. Thank you, Julia.
You bet.
We have appointment to the city of Sioux Falls Solid Waste Planning Board. Julia, were you going to handle that as well?
Well, apparently. Is there an interest in appointing someone today?
Does that have to be a commissioner or can it be any other person?
That's a great question. Sherry, John?
Chair, I'd be willing to volunteer if that so wishes to be served.
Commissioner Poppins has volunteered. Is that your motion?
It's not a motion. I'm just offering that out there.
I'll be upfront, and for, I had recommended that John stay on there because he has been on that board for any number of years. And if you need somebody to understand solid waste, he certainly does because he's been part of that. And not to say, Commissioner Poppins, you're not, you know, shouldn't have that.
That is not my intent. It was just to forego the issue that we talked about and having to pay extra overtime of taxpayer money, so.
That was my question. I know we talked a little bit about what the added overtime would be for that, and I can't recall what that added up to.
I think it was 12 hours every year. Does that really-
It was, you know, it was, I mean, like 12 hours. I don't know. I don't think that's a budget buster, but I like to have somebody on there that really understands what solid waste is and management's all about.
I think Commissioner Schmidt, I think what I'm hearing, not to interrupt you if I did, my apologies, what I'm hearing is it's about an hour or two every quarter.
Yeah.
So four to eight hours. Maybe some travel time in there.
Madam Chair, to move this along, I would move that we appoint John Hanson to remain on the Solid Waste Planning Board.
I second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'm going to, you know, we worked like crazy to cut our budget, and we cut some things out and maybe that were as much or very little more than this item. And nothing against John, but I'd like to see us save that money. But with that, any other discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Terry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to ask permission for you guys to award a bid for the 2021 Asphalt Surface Treatment Project. We had four bidders in the process, and I'll read the totals off for those. Aztec Corp. was $828,576.66. They were, by the way, the low bid. Next one is Road Guy Construction, $846,533.65. The next one was Batumina's Paving. They were $897,950.10. And the last one was Jensen Rock and Sand, and they were $969,172.4. So it's my recommendation and the engineers that we award this bid to Aztec.
So move, Madam Chair, on the recommendation from a highway superintendent to accept Aztec's bid.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have is to award the surfacing project for 2021. On this one here, we had, I believe, seven bidders. Again, I will start with the low bid for this project. It is $1,248,229.73, and that is by Asphalt Surfacing Company out of Sioux Falls. The next bidder was Dunick, and that was $1,261,799.40. The next bidder was Dunick, and that was one million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty cents. Next was Double H Paving, one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Next is Central Specialties, one million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Next is Seal Pros with a bid of one million, three hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. Then there was Batumina's Paving, one million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. The last one was Merlin Roy's Paving with one million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents. My recommendation is gonna be awarding the bid to Asphalt Surfacing Company on this project as well.
Heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibbon. Any discussion? Hearing none, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, last item I have, uh, is the shop ventilation system project. We have, uh, we're ready to award that bid, we had bid openings a week ago. With this project, we had four bidders, and I will read them off. I'll start with the low bid, and that was with Howe. That was one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Another bidder was Beatty Forseth with one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, a hundred dollars. The next was Howgan Heating and Air Conditioning, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And the last one was Prairie Suns with a bid of one hundred and eighty-five thousand and seven hundred dollars. So it's my recommendation, uh, I should say, along with the building superintendents, uh, he was in on this to go with Howe Plumbing and Heating to award this bid.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. That's a motion to award the bid to Howe.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Terry, didn't, what, what did you budget for this?
In my budget is a hundred thousand. But we do have, I know that the cost estimate, uh, at the time of budgeting, uh, this was, uh, you know, just our rough idea. And we didn't get going on this project until later, and I didn't have a cost estimate until after the budget was set. Cost estimate on this was about two hundred thousand is what the, the architectures had, uh, fought. So, uh, so this is probably over what I had budgeted in my budget.
Thank you.
Have the motion and a second. Anybody else? Is there something else you wanted to say?
I, I was just gonna add, uh, that the, the funding for this project is gonna be coming out of, uh, monies left over that we got in the Highway seventeen fund. I think we have a couple hundred thousand left in that. So we're gonna be using that money to pay for this, um, improvement on that.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna circle back. Joel, do you wanna tee up the transfer station property, item three on the agenda?
Thank you. So, uh, as those of you know, the transfer station has been shut down. We've received the go-ahead from the South Dakota DNR in order to, uh, comply with all of their rules in terms of a safe, ecologically sound shutdown. So we have the authorization to move forward. There is some, I think, equipment, uh, there's some equipment still sitting out there. But the discussion I wanted to have is spurred on by the fact that I had one of, one of the municipalities that I represent contacted me and asked whether or not there is interest on the part of the board in wanting to sell the property. And so I said I would bring it forward for discussion. It does appear at this point in time to be surplus property on the county rules. And, uh, so what I'm bringing forward for discussion at this point is to gauge the commission's interest on putting that property, uh, declaring it as surplus, and then putting it up for sale, whether that is by auction or, uh, RFPs or sealed bids or what have you. And so, uh, that's what I'm teeing up for discussion. And what I'm suggesting is, is that here in the future, we would take action on declaring that as surplus and, uh, getting it sold.
And I think, you know, for purposes of that, maybe we should just put that on the next agenda, Sean, as, um, that property is surplus property. Is there thoughts to do that?
And the equipment as well.
And could I, you know, I saw John coming out of his chair there just now. Do you wanna speak to anything on that?
Come on up, John.
Because this was already on the agenda, I did not put it on the agenda, but we have been approached by Midco, who's running fiber into Worthing as another potential storage of some of their supplies for about three to four months. And so they have, uh, turned in a lease agreement, much like, uh, the electrical company did with the pole storage at the other. Now that said, that's, they were hoping to start rolling at about April, and to be a three or four month lease, not a year long lease, so just have that on your plate, that, that option's out there. I know they're looking for an answer at that, on that quickly, but it could be rolled in the next meeting, too.
They would want that for how long, John?
Three to four months.
Oh.
And, uh, you know, we were kinda negotiating the same agreement we had with the other company, at like six hundred dollars a month lease.
I encourage you to try to facilitate that, uh, offer, so.
Okay.
All right.
This is just an item thought, uh, so Mr. Golden doesn't have, but that's potentially more money for four H.
We'll go ahead and move on.
We'll go on the general budget.
The proper step then would be for me to have it on the next agenda to have the, uh, the agreement signed, then? Is that what my next step would be, then?
Well, I, I think we'd wanna see the terms and what that all entailed.
The sooner they can get it to us, though, we can put it on the agenda if you're gonna be ready for it by the, for Tuesday.
I'll be ready by a week from today, or two weeks from today.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then I think if we see, you know, if we see a lease agreement, we lease it out to them. And then the commission also, next Tuesday, I guess I would ask, is we could declare our intent to, to offer that thing up for sale after such time as, uh, Midco gets done paying us some money, hopefully for three or four months, then it can generate some interest, we can generate some income for whoever, and, uh, people will know it's for sale.
Thank you. And then, uh, Joel, you wanted to discuss the T area property and potentially selling some of that?
Thank you. So on the T area property right now, that was originally purchased with the intent of building the jail, uh, the citizens gave us guidance on what they thought of the jail. And so at this time, it appears to be surplus property, uh, that's on the rolls of the county that we would no longer need. Now, with that said, there is a couple caveats to that. The first is, um, the property was also purchased with the apparent intent to do some, uh, wetlands or flooding mitigation. And there is a, uh, grant proposal that's been submitted for approval for about thirty thousand dollars where, uh, Wink Engineering would come in and tell us how to do some, uh, flooding diversion on Nine Mile Creek. So, um, the original intent of the purchase of the property was to build a facility on the buildable land and then to do flood diversion on the non-buildable acres. So carrying through with that intent, if there's no longer gonna be a jail there, it would be fair game for private industry to build on there and still be able to do wetlands mitigation. So what I'm suggesting at this point in time is that, yeah, we may need to gather some more information with regard to, uh, wetlands mitigation. But if the county was gonna build on the northern half, uh, it's fair game for private industry to build on the northern half now that we no longer need it. So what I'm suggesting is we would be putting up certain portions of the property, and we could do so in conjunction with the, talking to the flood diversion experts. I wouldn't anticipate that, uh, we, we would lose any acres to flood diversion just as a result of the jail no longer going there, of course, uh, because there's no difference between who builds what there, whether it's the county or private industry. And so I think we need to get the property up for sale. It's gonna be eminently more valuable here over the course of the next year. There is going to be utilities, uh, sewer and water brought out there. There is going to be a paved road coming out there, and there's already light industrial commercial to the north. And so in terms of the zoning of the property, I think what I'm hearing from the City of T or from some of the other, one of the other commissioners, is that City of T would have no problem with, uh, private industry building out there as well. So I think we can accomplish all those things and also score a win for the county in terms of returning that land back to private industry and recovering some of our cost.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron's. I know, uh, Toby and John, I don't see either one of them here in the audience. I guess what I would like to see happen, uh, for my part, is to see what that saleable portion would be. And I don't know if that depends on this grant application being done or if they actually have, um, a plan that they've started to put together for that water, flood mitigation or retention. So I, not to put the cart before the horse, but I don't wanna do that. I think we need to determine exactly what will be the saleable portion, depending on what the options available to the county to mitigate, um, the water issue that we have. So that, that would be my thought. Anybody else wanna speak to that?
I, I would just like to add that there is a, uh, family that does occupy a small farmstead there. And I think it's only fair that we notify them about any intentions that the county has so that they're able to make their long-range plans as well. Because, uh, I, Commissioner Aaron's has spoke well, and it is well within the, uh, T's growth area to want to have light industrial and commercial there. But if I live there, I'd like to have notification as to what the county is going to do because, uh, we have property on both sides. And I, I, I think some discussion should be, uh, given to them so that if they need to make any long-range plans about the sale of their property or moving, they have ample time to do that.
Thank you. Um, then we have item five, I'm gonna have to slip out, um, and I know, Joel, you're gonna, I'm sorry, not item five, item four, which is discussing, um, properties surrounding the airport. And Joel, you were gonna tee that up, I'm gonna be leaving, so I'm gonna hand the chair over to you to carry that forward.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, so I've put item number four, uh, on the agenda as, uh, and I'm gonna take a few minutes to kinda set the table here and talk about what's been going on out there. Obviously, I'm new to the commission, been on for about two years now. Learned a lot about the airport, and I've had quite a few people, over the last, I would say, last year, contact me about wanting to improve economic development opportunities out at the airport. Lincoln County is, uh, I don't know if I wanna say fortunate or unfortunate to have an airport, but we have one. And we have one of the, when measured by takeoffs and landings, we have one of the busiest airports in the entire state of South Dakota. And every time an airplane touches down on that airport runway, um, it creates or generates a certain amount of economic opportunity, whether that is, uh, through fuel sales, and then the county recaptures that in, uh, I think I'm using the term correctly, some sort of fuel excise tax, if I'm not mistaken, or some kind of fund that's created. For example, that fund is helping us replace one of the lights at the end of the runway that was recently broken and saved us, uh, from having to dip into the county general fund to pay for that. There's maintenance activities that go on out there, uh, legacy aviation repairs, uh, planes out there. And so more airplanes equals more opportunities for economic development. Some of the other things that are going on out there right now also are with regard to hangar space. State of South Dakota has a shortage of, or I should say, our airport has a shortage of hangar space. There are many, uh, people and businesses who own airplanes in the greater Sioux Falls, Lincoln County, Minnehaha County area, who would like to have a hangar to put their airplane, but they can't do so because of the lack of, uh, hangar space. So they go to other communities and they rent or they lease hangar space up in Flandrew or Laverne or other places. So that's potential revenue or economic opportunity that we're losing to other communities. It's not the greatest amount of economic opportunity, but there certainly is a lot there. And then just so people also know, there's a, uh, a lot of medical flights that go in and out of the T Airport, just for people who don't know. Emergency services, patients who need to be transported to a higher level of care go in and out of the T Airport for transportation either to Sioux Falls or maybe to an even larger community, um, that go in and out of there as well. In fact, that, they do really brisk business with the medical community out there. And so, uh, I've spoken with Legacy Aviation, they are the, uh, airplane company right now that's the current contractor, and they receive requests, uh, in the amount of maybe one to two requests per week for hangar space out at the airport. And there's nothing they can do because they have all of their hangar space rented out, and we have all of our, all of the hangars that have already been developed out there are filled up as well. However, back in late two thousand sixteen, county bought, um, a number of acres out there from the estate of, I think, Henry Hibbertson, if I'm pronouncing. Harry, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly. And, uh, the gentleman wanted to sell that land to the county for quite some time, and after he passed away, the county and the estate, his family came to terms on that. And the intent of that purchase, I've heard a number of comments about what the intent of the purchase is. But according to our current airport layout plan, which is the county's master plan for what an airport will do, is that land is intended to build, uh, hangars on it. And those hangars would be ostensibly leased out to private individuals or entities or businesses in order to serve as a warehouse for aviation-type opportunities. Right now, we don't, or we no longer, as a county, have an aviation advisory committee. We used to, they used to meet regularly and routinely. But, uh, that committee, I think, maybe either for lack of interest or maybe because of the airport layout plan, maybe, uh, being spearheaded more by the commission, kind of subverted or supplanted the need for that advisory committee. And so the proposal that I wanna get going is to restart, at least on a temporary ad hoc basis, is to get the advisory committee up and running again. And specifically, we need to get that advisory committee up and running because we've gotta start talking about ways to capture economic opportunity out at the airport. If we are able to, and I'm just envisioning the possibility, based upon my conversations with other airports from around the country, but also with legacy aviation, there are opportunities where businesses may wanna locate out to the airport and/or just individuals who wanna purchase hangar space out there. According to our current airport layout plan, uh, the building of hangars, um, you know, we're potentially four to five years out from that if we do it on a basis of wanting to recapture FAA reimbursement a year or two before that, uh, happens. So just so folks know, So just so folks know, we've got our aviation experts here in the audience with us today, Helms and Associates, top-notch engineering firm out of Aberdeen that does a lot of aviation engineering, and they work with counties all across the state and the country to help us try to figure out and to do what we're doing out there right now. And they put these things together, and, you know, I'll give them an opportunity if they want to speak after this. But just so folks also know, what we've been doing is when we engage in these repair, these fixes out at the airport, you know, like, we purchase land, and then we request reimbursement on the 90-10, approximately 90-10 reimbursement schedule from the FAA. So we bought the estate property back in 2016, but because of the way the rules work with the FAA, we're, this year, we're able to look at getting recapture of approximately 90% of the value of that land. So good deal for Lincoln County, right? Federal government pays us to engage in those upgrades to our airport. The question, though, that is kind of begged by that, though, is, do we want to pour some gas on the fire? Do we want to accelerate our efforts at the airport to do some economic development? And so, given the economy that we're living in, and as fast as things move in northern Lincoln County and in the greater Sioux Falls area, do we have an opportunity to capture more economic development if we move faster? And I spoke with Helms and Associates, and, you know, they told me, look, you've got to follow the rules with the FAA, but there's also a constructive way to have these kinds of discussions, and still do them in such a way where you could recapture reimbursement. It may require some front-end investment from the county upfront, though. Well, what I want to find out, then, is I want to convene a group of folks from Lincoln County to see if there's an appetite for economic development out at the airport. You know, I want to get the governor's office economic development involved, I want to get our Al Qaeda, soon to be our, you know, outgoing Al Qaeda executive director. What's the name of the new organization?
TBD.
Okay. So I want to get Jesse on there, I want to get airport hangar representatives out there, I want to get other businesses involved, who are heavy users of the airport, and I want to find out, can we drive economic development out at that airport? And we got to start somewhere. And the somewhere where I propose we start is something similar to the courthouse improvement committee, which is an ad hoc committee, that its term will come to an end eventually. It won't be a permanent standing committee, but we need to do the same thing out at the airport, essentially an airport improvement committee. And we've got a lot of issues going on at the airport, you know? We've got maintenance issues, we've got a ramp that needs to be repaired, we've got an apron that needs to be fixed, we've got empty land out there that needs to be developed. How are we going to, what's the timing and sequence of these things? That's what the airport layout plan helps with, but what the one thing that the current master plan doesn't help us with is, who are all the businesses that would like to participate in that? That's the piece we're missing. And so I think it's going to be important to bring these players to the table, it's going to help with economic development, and help out with jobs. And so what I'm proposing is, we're going to start an airport improvement committee, and we're going to advertise maybe over the next few months, and solicit people to be members of that committee, who would help us to figure out how we can do that, how can we achieve that? And I'm also going to ask Helms and Associates, can you speak to what I've talked about? Did I even accurately portray 10% of the conversation we had? I, I'm sure I may not have relayed it all correctly, but I guess the question is, can we do this? Can we have an airport advisory committee? Are you able to help us with that? Does economic development fall within the gambit of those discussions? You know, do we run afoul of FAA rules? Just, are you able to speak to some of these issues?
Good morning, my name's Corey Helms with Helms and Associates. Forgive me, as we weren't really sure as to the topic of, of today, so we feel as if we're coming in here kind of maybe a little unprepared, but to answer your question, Commissioner Erns is, I believe you sat in a meeting with us two Novembers ago, where we sat down and we did what we call a five-year capital improvement plan. We had Legacy Aviation there with their representation, we had representation from the county, and our representation from the Federal Aviation Administration, representation from the South Dakota Department of Aeronautics, along with our office and our subconsultant out of Sioux Falls. At that time, we went through and we prioritized as a group what you talked to. Now, we understand priorities may change, and Commissioner Poppins, you've probably heard this too, so many times that you probably repeat it in your sleep, but we work for you, we don't make those decisions. Those decisions for what the best use of the airport is driven by you, the owner, and thus the, the users. As far as forming a committee, that falls solely in, in our opinion upon you as the commission and the owners of the airport. We, we will have no say in, in that. We will advise you along the way to make sure that you are following all the rules set forth by the FAA, and to make sure that we're doing our job by not getting you, the airport, in trouble. We can explain the funding scenarios, the funding procedures, we can help identify projects, we can push those projects through as they come, but as far as the committee goes, that's going to have to fall upon the commission. And I don't know if that answers your questions, or...
Well, it does. I, I mean, I think, at least speaking for myself, we want to follow the rules, and we want to make sure that we don't run afoul of anything the FAA is going to request of us, or require of us to seek reimbursement down the road, and we just want to make sure that we have the discussions the, the right way. And what I think we're trying to figure out here is, what's the right way to go about doing these things?
And we're always here for phone calls when it comes to FAA regulations, the right way and the wrong way, but it's not our position to weigh in on opinions of committees.
Right.
Go ahead.
I, Brooke Edgar, I work at Helms and Associates. I, I just was going to put my two senses in, that there are no rules within the FAA that say you have to have an advisory committee, or you don't have to. You know, there's, there's nothing in any of their advisory, or their orders, or anything that says it's required or not required.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, or?
Well, I guess one of the questions I do have is, in terms of where we're at with the master plan, in seeking the reimbursement on the land purchase, am I correct in the understanding that there may be a decision made by the FAA on that within the next year?
If you look at the CIP that I'm sure that you've quoted from today, your 2021 grant from the FAA will be reimbursement of the land, along with the things that went along, you know, the environmental part of it, and this and that, to get approved. That process, they're asking for grant applications to be in by May 3, and then they'll work through their system, so hopefully, I don't want to say a date, because the minute I tell you it's going to be June, it'll be September.
Yeah.
But, but this fiscal year, yes. That is the plan.
And then, just one last question. I, I mean, does any of these discussions or committees we would want to do run afoul of, or would interfere with trying to get the instrument landing approach certification?
Committees won't have anything to do with that.
No.
No.
That was your previous consultant that submitted all of that information. We're still monitoring that to make sure that things are on track, but that won't have anything, a negative or positive impact on, on the approach procedures being developed.
Thank you. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I would, at this time, ask if any other committee members want to speak to the issue.
I guess being part of the airport board, obviously, I will be willing to volunteer to be on it.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
Thanks, Jake.
It's April.
Oh, it's April, sorry.
So as I always say, I'll, I'll be more than happy to be on that, since I'm on the airport committee already, and look at some of the options that we'll be pursuing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to say, just to the public, that for the longest time, ever since I can remember, the airport was always considered to be somewhat of an albatross. And for many years, we lost probably the most golden opportunity to have a reliever airport that had not only a runway, but a cross-wind runway. But previous commissioners did not appreciate the value of that, and since then, have negated that cross-wind runway, which would have facilitated an instrument approach. So for many years, it became an issue of how much money does it cost us to run this airport, without the vision of the fact that this thing has tremendous potential for this county? Because we're living this proximity to Sioux Falls, if you look at the development that is coming south, we have, we have, instead of a situation where we're going to have to subsidize, I think we've got a situation where we can capitalize on the benefits that that has. And to Commissioner Aaron's point, I think that a committee like this can now investigate what the true potential is, and what the benefit long-range for the county will be. And I do think that the taxpayers will like the results of that, because I do think it can be an income generator, so.
Serving on the airport, Mr. Chairman, my comments are, the airport has significantly changed from when I was on the board back in, in 2002. We've, the commission, commission has taken bold steps, stepping out, outside of the comfort zone, acquiring land that has been, for many years, talked about. When the opportunity came up, the committee, or the board stepped up and made that purchase, with the belief that we're going to get reimbursed for it, and I believe that will be this year, finally. That being said, there's no issues with trying to, I mean, that's always been the intent, is to try to make it as viable as possible, or self-viable as possible. And I think there's been great roads to that. But that being said, we're government, so if we want to talk about economic impact, economic impact with to sell the ground, put it back in the private sector, and get it back on the tax roll, but that is not what I'm suggesting, because I'm very proud of what we've done. So what is the next best course, is to make that a functioning, and to encourage businesses that come in. I do commend Commissioner Erns for bringing this back to the public, something that we have been working on for many years, and I hope to work with Commissioner Gibbon, and the rest of the board, to set up a committee as you desire, and formulate who should be on that, and, and maybe we could have a meeting together, and determine who should, or what entity should be on that committee, so.
Anybody else? So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask Sean to place this on the agenda again for the next committee meeting, commission meeting, excuse me, and we'll take action at that time, and in the interim here, for the next week and a half or so, or two weeks, I guess, we can figure out what that's going to look like, so. And I think we've covered all the commission items for this today. I don't see any need for any further executive session, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I assume, who? Gibbon.
I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Sean, would you call the rule?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Time scheduled, gentlemen, to...